So we're not able to livestream tonight. This has been down the past two weeks. We came to meeting last week, but then we'll be streamed either or. So we apologize for that, but it's out of our control. As a result, we can't afford tonight. But we're already recording. We can't livestream, but we're already recording the audio version of this tonight and the requested for YouTube channel. So it is available to be seen, heard after the fact, but it won't be livestreamed tonight due to the issue we have with the audio. So everybody be aware of that.
Mr. Chair, do you need us to move the mics closer before we can...
We'll be ready to hit so we make sure that we pick up that.
I'm sure. So we'd like to start with a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I want to need approval of the agenda. Second, I have a motion now, second. All in favor?
Aye.
After those, we have an agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, Board, and the Chair, we want to certainly acknowledge your recognition by Transportation Department. So Dr. Wells, I'm going to give some statistics about our Transportation Department introducing to me tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. The Chair members of the board. I'd like to introduce to you some of the members of the Transportation Department. Before I do that, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what they do. First of all, last year, our buses traveled approximately nine hundred thousand miles. They took a lot of miles. We have basically fifty-three drivers, including one who we just hired this week. We have a few that are in class, so that's a good thing. Hoping to take off the, a little bit of strain on some of the other drivers. We also have a hundred and four routes. It includes two AM and PM runs from middle and high. And currently, that includes several buses that are still doing double routes. So hopefully, we get some more drivers in. And we still have a few assistants and some bus drivers that we need to hire. We're working on that. Hopefully, these ones in the class will come through and we'll be able to finish that up. So first of all, I'd like to call Rhonda Campbell, our Transportation Supervisor. The leader of the pack. And then also, we have with us Penn Cash, our dispatcher. And then Bee, who is our assistant, and she also drives quite a bit. And then Rodney Reynolds, who's our shop foreman. Also in the shop, we have Terry Tomlin, TJ Wright, and Jeff Hilton. So these are our kind of main cogs there. I know we have several bus drivers in attendance. So I'd like to thank them and all the other drivers for all they do and for a good start to the year.
We've made it work with all the technology.
Mr. Ror, I need you, one way or the other, just so we can make sure we get you in. That's perfect, okay. One, two. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, next, I would like to make a recognition of Dr. Ed Hopkins. Ed was a forty-year employee for us here at Amherst County Public Schools. And a little bit background before I read with the certificate actually states, came here teaching sixth grade at Southern Elementary School in nineteen sixty-six to nineteen sixty-eight. From sixty-eight to seventy-two, he was at Amherst County High School teaching. In nineteen seventy-two, nineteen eighty-nine, he was principal at Amherst Elementary School. And from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-one, he was the principal of Nelson Junior High School. Little story, that's where I first met him because Lindy White, who was the B teacher and track coach, she coached me when I was in junior high school, was out for a medical purpose. So I think I came in as a long-term sub and actually helped coach the track team that spring because I needed, Lindy couldn't be there, so I helped with that. So actually, he was principal there. It was like nineteen ninety, roughly, that he was principal there. So that's my first meeting. So I just had graduated in DUT at the time, so that's when I met him. And then he moved to a secondary supervisor after that and was instrumental in our adult GED program. So was a great person here for the county, just a great individual. And so we want to recognize him tonight. So I believe this. So I want to read the certificate. Here in Amherst County Public Schools recognizes Dr. Ed Hopkins. For his contributions to the students, staff, families, and members of the Amherst County, of Amherst community. Dr. Hopkins dedicated forty years to enriching the lives of students in our community. During his career, he served as a teacher, building administrator, supervisor of secondary instruction, and supervisor of adult education. Dr. Hopkins embodied the very essence of extralegal education. His passion for teaching and his unwavering commitment to his students are loved in the double more on our school division and our community. Dr. Hopkins was an inspiration to all who have the privilege of knowing him.
All right, moving on to three point oh one, public comment. I've got four names listed here. First is Ona McQuirney.
Good evening, you're on. My name is Ona McQuirney. Ms. Saunders, I don't think we've met. Good evening. But I have worked for Amherst Schools for twelve years as a school district director. And I am a transgender woman. And I'm thrilled with the fact that within the governor's new model policies for transgender students, the VDOE is acknowledging the existence of transgender persons. When this policy is passed, you will be acknowledging the existence of transgender students. Thank you. And you will be acknowledging the existence of transgender families. Thank you. And you are okaying the use of new pronouns and new names with the parent's consent. Thank you. And you are even offering alternatives regarding the question of bathroom use. Thank you. And by embracing these policies in whole or in part, Amherst Schools will be acknowledging the existence of transgender students and their needs and the people who are important to them. Now, this is a big step from where we've been in the past when I've been before you a few years ago. But I'm certain you will realize that even with these important acknowledgements, some of these policies are still incomplete and in need of refinement. Your administrators and your teachers will tell you that all Amherst County families cannot be painted with one brush. That information that one family can hear calmly could, in another family, place their child at risk of mental or even physical harm. And none of us wants to see the children we care about put at risk of harm of any kind. So you can see that in this document, the policy of notification of parents obviously remains a work in progress. But thank you for the progress you're making in specifically acknowledging that our existence as persons is more than just being a protected class. We are real adults. We are real children and real families. We face challenges that others in Amherst County do not face. And now or very soon, this work in progress document, we will have policies that begin to acknowledge these very real facts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is David Childress.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Board, my name's David Childress. I reside at one thirty-three Partridge Place in Madison Heights. At first, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Wells. I appreciate the love of the board for hiring Dr. Wells as superintendent. I think he's done an outstanding job and excited to see what he has to offer for the future of this county. Next, I'd like to address the board about the model policy. Just remember that the number one obligation that the school board has is to the safety and security of our students, all students, and to be able to provide a place where our students can receive the best education they can. I've looked at our current policies that you have. I've looked at Governor Yonkin's model policy. And I think when you look at the two, Amherst is already, we're on the right path. We have a lot of similar results as a result of the policies and the procedures that you already have in place. So I'm happy with that. But I would just like to remind the board that there are other potential issues if we don't adopt the policy that Governor Yonkin has graciously put out there for the state. And that is the offer of his support for school divisions, the attorney general's support. And I would just ask that to make sure that you're seeking early legal counsel and take that into consideration as you are looking at this policy and other policies. And I agree with the previous speaker. I don't think it's a complete policy in and of itself, and it would require some tweaks as well. But I think there, I would be cautious if we don't adopt the policy because of the lack of support that we may see from the state. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Dawn Poole.
Good evening, members of the board. I want to, Dawn Poole, District Eight, UH, Pleasant View, twenty-seven thirty-four Buffalo Springs, Tempe. I'd like to second David's thoughts on the wonderful job that Dr. Wells is doing thus far. Just so excited to see the community collaboration and the engagement efforts that are being made and really starting to see those payoffs. So thank you, Dr. Wells, for all of that hard work. I too am here to talk about the model policy tonight. I think that this policy provided by the VDOE is an answer for addressing a controversial issue, which is transgenderism. It strengthens our ability to have respect for all students while giving parents the rights to make decisions with respect to their children. It is Yonkin's answer to a promise that he made in which our county supported him at a rate of over seventy percent when he was elected. We do not currently have a singular policy at Amherst that directly provides guidance and expectations for how to treat situations that can arise from transgenderism. We do have several policies that, as David stated, are on the right track for doing that. But what I like about this is it provides a very transparent way for parents to know what their rights are and for boards to be, and administration to be able to implement a policy that is specifically related to transgenderism. I want to just discuss some of the highlights of the policy for any that you may not know them. It does provide prevention for bullying of all students, even those that may consider themselves transgender. It requires bullying be reported to parents, and we have a policy much like that in place. It protects teachers related to compelled speech. So it does have some information in the policy that says that, you know, teachers would not have to go against their own constitutional rights, and I think that's a good part of the policy. It protects students and not allowing instructional materials or counseling by school staff related to gender confusion without parent permission and involvement. It keeps dress codes gender neutral, and it addresses facility use based off the student's legal sex as listed on their official record and not based off their gender identity. It does provide accommodations for transgender students to opt out of using a bathroom that they don't want to use. It also provides that same accommodation for students that consider themselves the sex that they were born. And lastly, it provides for our athletics department to remain sex segregated, which I think is very important. So this policy is much more transparent than the current policies that we have in place that would be put into use in a situation like this. And for that reason, it's transparency. It's protection provided by the state. I think that we should adopt it tonight. I think that it's respectable for all students, all teachers, and all parents. And I don't see any reason not to adopt this policy. So thank you so much.
Next, we have Jeff Porter.
Wow, what's going on tonight, huh? I am not speaking about the policy. What I am concerned about is something that seems to be looming on the horizon.
You said you named your head best for a little bit.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Porter. I live at four seven eight Sweeney's Lake Road, Madison Heights, Virginia. I am concerned about a looming event that seems to be headed our way. And that is the issue of masks, shutdowns, and vaccines. I'm already hearing that those are being considered and in some places are already being considered. Each of those, I believe, are something that if a person chooses to do those kinds of things, that that's within their right to do so. However, the scientific information in regards to how effective these were show that none of these were effective. Nothing's changed. The new vaccine that is coming out still does not deal with whether a person can pass on COVID or keep them from getting COVID. Therefore, I think that it's important for you as a board to think about how best to serve the students and teachers and staff of this school district. I think that when we look at public health departments, FDA, CDC, they have taken on enormous power. It's easy for a board or for our school district to, you know, just point to these and say, well, this is what they say we need to do. They are not elected officials. It is up to us, it is up to you, to think through how best to serve our students. I've talked with you about the importance of finding other sources of information in regards to all three of these issues of masks, vaccines, and shutdowns. I plead with you. Please continue to look for those. CDC, FDA, public health departments are not the only source of information. So, thank you for your time. I am proud to be a part of this community, and I'm proud that each of you serve in this capacity. We need your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So that is all that we've had signed up. Is anyone from the, there's someone in the back would like to speak? Come forward, please. Send your name and address. Yes, name and address.
Hey, y'all, I'm Sam Silver, District Two, ECPS parent. I was not planning on saying anything tonight, but I feel compelled to speak. I think y'all have heard me talk about this before and believing in the Nelson times today, kind of saying these things. We need leaders who are going to do right for their district, who are not about following a party plan. You know, we have a lot of leaders right now. They show allegiance to party more than allegiance to their district. And so these issues are designed to divide us, this stuff we're talking about. If there's validity to what these speakers before me have said to y'all, I've said this to y'all the same thing, by all means, take it to Richmond. Take it to DC. Take it to the world courts, you know what I mean? Take it to the Haiti. But this is Amherst County. It's interesting to me, as I come to most of these meetings, the very few, you know, a lot of meetings, no one shows up. And then when these wedge issues comes at club, then people show up all of a sudden, repeating like the talking points, like marching orders almost. And that, to me, as a parent, really is bothersome. Because y'all, and what these people are doing here is just the business of educating these students. And so when it's time to talk about budget, how are we going to pay these teachers? How are we going to fill these vacant positions? How are we going to make sure that these weaving rates and math rates are where they need to be so that Amherst High School is competitive with the Jefferson Forest or Nelson High School? Okay? I don't see folks showing up for just that basic stuff for exactly what we're supposed to be doing here, just making sure the school is run. So I'm not here to question the validity of what any of these speakers are seeing, but I think it should be very apparent to you all and assured apparent to me and a lot of my fellow parents that what their agenda is is just to disrupt these proceedings. And that's very frustrating, and it's not good for Amherst, it's not good for ECPS. So I hope that you all will take into consideration the thoughts and expertise of these educators, and I trust you all to make the right decisions on all this stuff. So thank you all very much. Good day.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience like to approach the voting? Saying that, move on. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to keep AC policy. So the current policy that we had in place. We were getting there.
Oh, I didn't know what you were talking about.
We were moving to four point oh one, the model policy. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to keep our policy AC as written.
Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sort of considering this, and it's only in terms of construction. I think we can't hear. I would like to hear the recommendations from Dr. Wells and whatever information you would like to provide.
So last month, I presented you all with the board with a copy of the model policies titled Ensuring Privacy That Can Be In Respect For All Students and Parents in Virginia Public Schools, and asked you to review. As your place, and I've also included policy AC, which is our active policy on Amherst regulation. Was you approved in August of 2022? It's important to note that the board did not adopt the previous model policies that were, it's a northern expression, as good as well to improve the NCPS policy on Amherst regulation, which is what we currently have in place. Upon speaking of legal counsel, the current policy meets all legal requirements and our practices are compliant with the model policies. So it would be my recommendation that we keep our current policy AC as opposed to adopting the model policies. Got any other questions that you'd like to add?
Mr. Chair, I think we shall, in having the advantage of legal advice that was brought, I think it would be pretty good rest of the current policy.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Justice.
Right there. So regarding Governor Yonkin's model policy for ensuring privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents of Virginia Public Schools, I think in California, six school boards are facing potential lawsuits from their trade general because they are representing the viewpoint of their community. Parents are to be involved in decisions regarding their children's physical and mental health. Those school districts thought it was so important that they had got the policy that defines that. They're facing a lawsuit from their trade general. I believe Virginia's school boards and Amherst School Board is getting a one and only opportunity to adopt the policy that will define parental rights to be involved in the medical, mental, and academic issues for their kids. That it establishes protections for those who do not want to be compelled to speak and act against their conscience. It defines the protections for transgender students. It establishes a protocol for them to prove legally their legal identity, whether it's through a change of birth certificate, state issued ID, or a court document. It allows for protections for students who are in fear of their safety from a home life due to their choice to be able to have that safe haven. That is identified in this policy. It protects the safety of all students, and it gives us the legal constitutional reasons to adopt these policies. I understand there are practice policies, policies. This is what we're doing in Amherst to make a policy that defines that, assists our teachers, it assists our students, and it assists our parents. When we keep it very general, it, we can be compliant. And I believe the reason, at least for myself, when Governor Northroom's policy was put forth that I voted for AC, it was because Governor Northroom's policy was intentionally... removing the parental involvement when it came to gender identity with students. And that was a problem. We don't keep secrets from our parents. And Governor Youngkin's policy, I think speaks to that and is very solid. So I would really encourage this board to reconsider, um, adopting it or not. I don't believe that we would get another opportunity to have such a tight policy, even though it's not perfect. Thank you.
Any, any other discussion?
Mr. Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
The, can everybody hear me okay? All right, great. I know this is a, a bad mic, the mic's not working. The, the policy, the model policy is, is a good blueprint. However, being unable to seek legal counsel prior to making a decision on this policy and with recent comments made and public comments made, I support Dr. Wells's decision and what he's done with the school and he's moving the school in the right direction. His recommendation is to be continued with our current policy. And policy is what the school board does. And it doesn't mean we don't have an opportunity to change this policy. We've changed this policy before, just recently. And we have an opportunity to adopt new policy. However, to go in blindly without having a discussion, a legal discussion with our attorneys, as was stated earlier with public comment, I think is a great idea. I, I support parental involvement. I support the parents' right to know what's going on in this school. And I know that there's families in this community that are facing these issues. I also know that there's a darker side to this issue and every child's safety is, when I think about this policy, an open book, a trans student or a student not sure goes and speaks to a counselor, that counselor notifies the parent. That parent gets furious. And when that child gets home, who's going to take the blame for what happens to that child? Are you going to? Anybody in that audience going to? And just making an open book and put that child in, in the way of danger? Yeah, it's their kid. It's our kid. It's our community's kid. And we can't, I can't, I can't allow, it didn't happen to any of these kids. All kids matter. And I believe in parental rights, yes, I did. But I, I, I know that there's better ways to handle this policy. Currently, the policy is our best option at this time until we can seek legal counsel.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think anybody has anything to worry about when it comes to parental rights. It's written right in the Code of Virginia. We all have parental rights. Our discussion right now should be if we're going to have an Amherst policy or a Richmond policy. I prefer an Amherst policy that reflects Amherst. We did, we didn't adopt, um, Northrooms. I don't care to adopt Youngkins. I want Amherst. Our policy should reflect us and no one else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may double dip. I would like to know what part of this doesn't represent Amherst. I think tonight's speakers, with Speaker McQuillan, all known McQuillan, McQuillan, as well as other speakers represented that there was a relatively unified appreciation for this, um, model policy, even though we know it's not complete. It does offer protections for that student who has fearful fear that they will undergo abuse when they get home. And it makes good protections for that, as well as, I don't, a student that's in that environment has a good pulse, know whether that's their parent or not. And I believe the counselor will too. And so they can make a wise, um, decision using this policy. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
This policy does not allow what she just stated. This policy does not cover that. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Oh, we had a party in, but anyway. So we had a motion, we had a second, we had a discussion. Discussion's closed. All in favor of the policy, of the, of the motion, excuse me?
So, want to restate the, the motion? Does everybody clear the motion was to maintain policy AC and do not adopt the model policy that we're...
Correct, correct. So, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Um, opposed.
Okay. Ayes had it. Dr. Wells?
Yes, we have a consensus.
Five point oh, thank you. So, board, I need a, um, motion for a consent agenda?
For whom is chair? Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, the, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Dr. Wells?
Thank you. So next we have a presentation on, uh, student parent reports. And this is, uh, Ms. Monahan and myself have had a guide in this mic. So before we do, we have, if you do a mic. So we'll grab the one for the president. So again, this is, uh, we have the Amherst County, uh, High School has a community school grant that we've applied for and Ms. Monahan has overseen. And, uh, part of that grant is, um, we have two community partners we're partnering with. One is the Cook Center for Human Connection and one is Panorama Education. I'll get, I'll talk a little bit about, uh, each of these and then, um, Ms. Monahan will be sharing back and forth as to, as her partners here. So the Cook Center, basically it's a, as I said, on-demand courses for parents. This is for parent guidance, they can, they have parents ask the therapist, parents to get help, and there's for parent coaching. And this focuses on providing support for students, families, and schools in reducing suicide, as well as offering mental health resources and support for students and their families. One service they provide is parentguidance.org, which is an online service licensed by, uh, licensed service by licensed therapists that provides trusted and specialized courses, professional support to save community for parents to learn how to support their children and get answers to mental health questions. I want to say this is voluntary. Uh, parents want to choose this, they can. It is just a, it's a resource that is available. But it is voluntary. And this next slide here actually shows you, uh, what, what, like they could go in there and log into this and select new courses and they could sign up for things and get support, uh, to help them work with their children. So if a parent came to us asking for additional support, so we could refer them to this if they so chose. It's often required, but it does give parents an option of things they can do, um, to get additional resources to support this, this student. Ms. Monahan?
Yes, sir. Wow, sorry. Um, so basically how this works is, uh, parent staff members, um, anyone can create a free account on parentguidance.org and they can access these free resources. You can see, um, certain topic areas for the on-demand courses. Those are all videoed and, um, led by professionals, um, clinical staff. And they also have, it's almost like an FAQ section of the website where, um, people have already posed maybe questions or concerns to a therapist and they post the answers for people to be able to read or watch. Some of them are videoed and accessed, but if they don't see their question being addressed, they can actually post a new question and, and get an answer within a reasonable amount of time. Um, the third section is a get help section and this really links, um, people to national hotline and mental health resources, the Trevor Project, the 988 suicide hotline, those kinds of resources so that people have access and quickly to multiple, um, resources they might be needing. Um, what will happen is for this piece that we're talking about right now, we will actually post a medallion on several key spots on our websites so that parents can link quickly to this resource and easily. Um, but again, as Dr. Wells said, all of that is completely voluntary. We just want it to, it to be available, um, if needed. We think it's going to be a really great opportunity for our families. In addition, um, this is a paid service that we're paying for through this grant, the parent coaching. So any Amherst County High School students, caregiver's, or staff have access to free parent coaching. This is a one-on-one service that would be weekly and ongoing. Um, again, completely voluntary. Um, it is confidential. We will not be told who is accessing these services. The only report we will receive is the number of our parents or caregivers or staff who are, um, receiving this service of parent coaching. We will not get any names or any identifiable, identifying, um, information. Uh, it is self-directed, so parents or caregivers who may be seeking this out would maybe potentially have an issue they're dealing with, that they're concerned about, or need help or support with. Um, and they would work through that together with their coach.
So another program is Panorama and I'm not going to read that whole thing. Basically, uh, this is, the, the program is designed to help us track student data and develop intervention strategies to help them be successful. And currently Panorama is being used in over two thousand school districts across the nation and the deal with these initiatives for us to use as well.
So what this is going to do for us is really help us be able to address needs and be able to disaggregate data pretty quickly so that we can, um, really tailor interventions to the students' needs. And so it will provide for us, uh, what we call a data dashboard, where we will have attendance data, behavior data, academic data, and, um, potentially character skill data, um, all in one place. So that if there is a deficit in an area or a need of strengthening, we can quickly be able to look at the playbook um, and meet with our teams and determine what interventions might be helpful in that particular situation. So the playbook, as you can see under the number three, is really a, um, it's over five hundred interventions that have been logged for academic needs, um, behavior needs, those kinds of things. So, um, it's a rich resource that will add to our team discussions as we're looking to help students find success. In addition, it offers us the opportunity to customize surveys so we can, um, create our own survey questions for climate surveys, for students, for staff, for family. We can determine needs in that, in those areas and be able to really try to address those needs. And, um, the last, go back to, these are just screenshots. So that's what the data dashboard would look like potentially. And so, um, we would be able to really drill down to find needs and, you know, be able to address those needs in the classroom or within the school building. In addition, um, that just shows you the surveys that are available. Um, and that's literally what the, um, website looks like. We're hoping to really be able to get information from our students, from our families, from our staff, and really be able to find out where we need to focus our energies to make our schools and community feel safer and more welcoming and those kinds of things.
Again, one thing that's important that we give students voice and understand what their thoughts are, um, on everything, especially school climate, what we can do there, so we give students voice there, and we give our staff voice and our parent voice. And this is what, this hopefully will help us get some of that in the high school. Just get some better, get better and better information about what, what's going on in that building. And then playbook, um, so again, we have a five hundred academic behavior and character and strategies to span VTSS, which we don't do, you know, the VTSS, uh, school vision, and lets us go through, um, and implement those types, those types of, uh, strategies needed. So we build these regulations for us in that capacity. And...
Yes.
So, uh, again, this is being paid for through the, uh, through the grant. And, uh, any questions, we'll try to answer them.
We're really excited.
Just one, just one question, this one, Mr. Terry. The, uh, the surveys, how do you, uh, I guess gauge the participation?
That's an excellent question. So, um, depending on what group we're trying to target, I guess it depends, right? So, um, one of the things that has been a struggle is, um, trying to get everybody's voice heard, right?
Correct.
So I think that we would do what we could to, to get that information out in whatever ways we can figure out. Social media, um, e-glass, emails, you know, um, and I think that's important. Also, I think we will use the, for student surveys, we'll probably utilize their emails. And, and hopefully maybe set aside some class time. We haven't worked through all those logistics yet.
Right, right, understandable.
But trying to, trying to get as much participation and everybody's voice heard, that's, that's the goal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Thank you, Ms. Monahan.
Thank you.
Moving on to seven point oh.
Chris, now we have an administrative update with Dr. Hudson.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'd like to provide you some updates on the high school renovation project. Let me start over. Used to have it right here in front of it. There we go. I should turn. There we go, is that it? Start over. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, provide you an update with the high school renovation project. First of all, uh, Dr. Wells has signed the letter of intent award agreements, uh, with Jamerson Lewis. So that's a plus. Our groundbreaking ceremony, if you have not heard, will be Friday, September twenty ninth from one to three. So we are excited for that and if you have not, you will get an invitation for that. Uh, the month of October, uh, Jamerson Lewis will then prepare, uh, for this project. And then we hope to, uh, break ground actually on or about November first. So by that time, uh, football games will be over and, uh, you know, we will need that parking lot for, uh, for that. So the, uh, parking, uh, will not be an issue on that. We're planning on that back lot being closed. Mr. Oaks and I have done some site work along with, uh, Mr. Crawford in, uh, preparing for where the, uh, car riders will go, uh, students walking about the building, et cetera. So we're, we're currently planning on those things. Uh, and, uh, we also, Mr. Oaks and I met with, uh, Jamerson Lewis and some others as we talked about the field house and we're updating those plans as well. So all exciting news on the, uh, on the front of that. Uh, and then we still do not have any information on the school construction grant. Uh, it was told to us it would be here in the beginning of September, however, tomorrow is September fifteenth and it's the middle of September. So we'll hope for tomorrow. Anything else to talk to you? Questions on that project? Board, anything?
Dr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
The grant you're talking about, the construction grant, is that the one we're reapplying for?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you.
Soon as it comes out. And, uh, also on the grant front, we've not heard any information on the other two grants that we've applied for, so I'll just update you on that. Board, anything else? Two weeks from now, looking forward to it, Dr. Hudson. Two weeks from now, looking forward to it, Dr. Hood.
Yes, sir. Seven point oh two?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you have the August suspension report in front of you. You have any questions?
Board, any questions?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, Dr. Hood, do you find that new practices that we were implementing this year have been effective in our discipline?
We will find out in our next discussion. Does anyone need that for us?
Anything else, board? Dr. Wells moving on.
Actually, we have, uh, Ms. Conde finance. Um, before she gets started, we, we have gotten a new budget. And, uh, we know getting some extra money. However, the capital pool is still three weeks out. So we don't know how that money is going to be allocated. You know, what's, what's strange rate taxes and stipulations from the state and how that money has to be spent. Uh, we anticipate two and a half, roughly two point five billion dollars additional funding. But again, we don't know where that funding has to be applied. So until the capital pool comes out, we can't give you any real, um, numbers as far as what we can do where, because we don't, we don't want to jump ahead and get ahead of the game. And maybe we can do something to make comments that we can't do because it's starting to stipulate a different direction. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, school board. So before you tonight are your financial reports through August twenty twenty-three. Your local revenue report has both July and August receipts. Um, your A D M report, you'll see that our A D M is pretty close in line to what we had on budget built on, which is the thirty-seven fifty-one. Um, our revenues are being received as anticipated for the operating. We're getting our SOQ funded revenue lines. Um, on the child nutrition report, you'll see that the revenue is lower than their expenditures, but that's anticipated as it is a reimbursable model so that the, the meals that they serve in August, they'll get later in the year, um, next month. So the, for the operating budget, our expenditures are in line. If you refer to your object code report, um, the only item that is overstressed is on page three, and that is the replacement of motor vehicles. In our budget, we have two buses budgeted, and we actually went ahead and encumbered for three. We heard this, what we, the board said we'd like to try to do three every year. Um, we wanted to go ahead and get that order in, because it takes a while to get the buses. And that third bus would be coming in towards the end of the school year. And if the funding does not come into reality, we can easily, um, push that back into the next year's budget. Um, so I just wanted to bring that one item to your attention. Um, again, this report does reflect the initial, the board approved, um, budget that was the government's proposed. We are, um, operating off of a skinny budget. Um, we've adjusted those expenditures down to meet those levels, and we are just waiting for the capital and see what that state funding looks like as well as any, um, requirements as far as what will match. So, um, do you have any questions? I do have a second item, but I'll pause this so you can have a question.
Board, anything?
I have one question. Um, so buses that we're going to be ordering, please tell me they have air conditioning.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else on the board? Thank you, Ms. Conde.
So eight point two is the bu- budget calendar discussion. So we are providing, yes, we're talking about the twenty-four budget as well as the twenty-five budget, but we do need to start that process. So we are presenting to you the established, a proposed, um, established timeline for that budget development process. We have shared this with the county, and this timeline does meet their budget timeline. But we wanted to bring this to the board for your review, um, discussion, if you have any concerns.
Dr. Wells moving on to nine point oh.
Sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, this is a move to instruction. And before I turn over to Dr. Norman, I just want to thank him on the, the, the instructional team for all the work they have done to support our school. Um, we, we got to a pretty good place right now. We're not really wanting to, you know, speak for one or the second, but I do want to thank our team for all the work they have done. Also, I want to thank our school-based personnel for their work and dedication. As a result of everyone's hard work, I can proudly state that we spanned other schools as mid-state accreditation standards, and we are fully accredited. Using this accomplishment is a result of the hard work of our students, teachers, building administrators, central office staff, as well as the working of the board. This is an accomplishment that we should all be proud of and celebrate. However, uh, we need to realize that our students are still suffering from the effects of the pandemic, and we haven't got to do that yet. So we will celebrate this victory, uh, before we're done, there's much work yet to be done. So just, I just want to make that one publicly state that I'm very, just very proud of the work of our, our, our staff and the work they've done and getting our students, uh, getting our students caught up. Like, we know we still have a lot of work yet to do. So, Dr. Norman?
Thank you so much, Dr. Wells. We appreciate that. So, Mr. Neighbors and I are going to present to you, as you know, last month, we presented just raw data. And so we're going to go through this pretty quickly. At your place, you should have your data binder. It's got everything specific in it as well as very detailed information in regards to each school, to each subgroup. As we go through the presentation, it's very, um, focused on a couple of things, but what I want to make sure that you're seeing is when you go through your data book and you find things that you have questions about, please reach out to us. Um, shoot us an email, um, provide information to, um, the, the board chair, and then he can give that information to us. And that way he can get that information directly back to you as to how student groups are doing, or how a specific school was doing, and what that looks like, uh, us moving forward into the upcoming school year. Um, so what I'd like to be able to do is first say congratulations on actually having the, your role in funding go to our students. Um, if you'll notice, um, we're only one percent under what the state, um, designated for instructional support. So student expenditures, you actually have, um, you're right at what the state is. If you look at our surrounding, um, region, it, they are a little bit lower. Um, so we are right in line with where we want to be on expenditures that go out for our students. We also, I can also tell you, we have in our free and reduced eligibility, we have a twenty-two percent of our population are able to apply and receive free and reduced lunch across Cape all the way through twelve. Um, in our title, in our Title One schools, we have, um, some of our schools are ninety-eight percent free and reduced lunch, some are sixty-seven percent. Our lowest in our schools, elementary schools, is right at, um, thirty-nine percent, um, hitting that forty percent mark, I believe, that's what that is. And we do not apply for title funds for our secondary schools. Um, we are, we have all schools C E P right now, um, where they receive, um, free, uh, lunch and breakfast for any, any student who wants that, and will continue in that vein just to make sure that our students get what they need, we need their needs, um, before we actually teach them. Um, the next thing I'd like to talk to you about is just, this is just basic information. So when we move forward into the data, you kind of have some foundational, um, items. The first is that there's two different accountability systems. One is the federal accountability system, and one is the state. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you specifically about the state and what that looks like. There are overall indicators that we actually have, and there's three different types of indicators. The first one is where we combine all students into content areas such as English, math, and science. And we look at that entire school population, anybody who took an English test, anybody who took a math test, anybody who took a science test, and clump all of those students together, and those are our first indicators. Then we have achievement gap indicators. And we actually have eight different achievement gaps where we track, um, and we have to meet certain levels. And they are Asian, Black, economically disadvantaged, E L L population, Hispanic, multi-race, students with disability, and white. And those eight are our subgroups, and that when we talk about achievement gaps, those are the subgroups that we're talking about. And then the third area is all about engagement. Um, this hits a lot into our high school. Um, all, of course, pride, accentuation is in, is indicator for every single school, but graduation, drop out rate, and college career and civic readiness is specific to the high school. Okay? So that's what we're going to talk to you about tonight in regards to, um, where we fall, um, in our support for our students. When we talk about accreditation, there are three different levels of accreditation and three different categories. So our ratings are either you are accredited, you are accredited with conditions, or you are denied accreditation. And there are stipulations that go along with each one. And when we look at the indicators, we'll talk about a level one indicator, uh, which is green, red. A level two indicator, which we designate as yellow, and a level three indicator that we designate as red. And so when you look at the data points, you can actually instantly see this is all green or this is red, and this is yellow, and this is really good. We want to have as many green as we can get. So if you'll notice, we got lots of green. We are very excited about that. Um, Amherst County, as Dr. Wells said, is fully accredited. We have one school, um, central elementary school, that is accredited with conditions. And when we start talking about specific school data, I'll talk to you about what that means for that particular school and why they are, um, have conditions. Any questions so far before we move on to what this all looks like with data? Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Norman, in your presentation, do we have a comparison what looked like last year?
Yes, ma'am. In the book, if you, I'll show you on the next slide where you can kind of look to see where we were last year and, and where we are this year.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need to talk about the state right now, because as you know, I came before this board many, many times last year and said, I'm sorry, the state has changed their mind, and we have to do this now. And so there were multiple things that the state actually changed. And one of them was the rating system or the cut scores or their bands, um, of proficiency or non-proficiency. So I'm going to kind of talk to you about what we did last time at the board, and that was talking about raw data. And then I have a student, and a student who failed, or they passed it. They take the test, fail, or they pass. What does that look like for us as a division? Because when they put, when the state puts recovery points on it or student growth points on it, sometimes it inflates it, sometimes it declines it. But what I really want to know is where our students are, and are we closing the achievement gaps in regards to our Black students, our disadvantaged students, our white students, our Hispanic, our students with disabilities? Are we closing that gap for them? And where are we on that pendulum of where kids need to be? So if you look at the very first area, and this is from multiple schools, so I tried to take a snippet so you could see from different schools. And I'm going to talk about four of our, um, gap groups. Black, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and multi-race. Those are our four areas that we want to concentrate on, and we will be moving forward. But I need to kind of explain how the state has shown the actual data. So you can, when you look at your book and you have questions, we can kind of talk about that. So if you notice on the very first bar, our Black student at this specific school, the current year is what we actually had this year. That first row where it says the seven, that's the number of stu- Black students at that school who actually passed that test. If you look all the way over to the very end, three rows in where it says the seventeen, that's the number of Black students that actually took the test. Okay, so we had seventeen students take the test, seven pass. Go to the pre, and we have a pass rate in that particular school of fifty-eight point eight-two. If you go to the very next row, previous year, the year before, we had three students, three Black students in this specific school pass. Go all the way over, we had fifteen students. So if you look, and we had sixty-six point six-seven pass rate. We had a higher pass rate last year with a lower number of students passing. That's how the state actually calculated. That's the formula that they used last year. But when I look specifically at raw data, my current year, I had seven out of seventeen students pass with forty-one percent gain on that. In comparison to last year, previous year, three out of fifteen, I was at twenty percent. I doubled my growth with the, or my performance with those students. Okay, I closed that gap. That's what I'm looking at. That's where I need, when we talk about data, for you to understand that it may look on that current year that we got lower scores. Based on the state calculation, yes, yes, board, we did. But when I look at raw data, and I look at who's passing and who's not passing, I got more kids passing, and I'm closing the achievement gap in all categories. Any questions? I see your.
Yes.
I see your hand, go ahead.
All right, I understand the raw data.
I think.
That makes perfect sense. And then when you look at those, that bar or that row, you can see the previous year had a higher pass rate. And you said that was based on the fact that this came.
The different calculations.
How did they calculate it differently?
Yes, so if you look at our student growth, so in that main portion where it says two, seven, and ten, that was growth points. So if you remember, the first year we did growth points, which was the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three school, you're right here. Year before, I'm sorry. They calculated, they gave you a test. So when you came into the school year, a fifth grade student took the fourth grade test in the fall. And then at the very end of the year, they took the fifth grade test. Last year, when they came in as fifth graders, they took the fifth grade test. And then at the end of the year, they took the fifth grade test. So they had more growth points the previous, two years ago than they had last year. So I had doubled my point. I get more points for growth than I do for recovery. So I can test again, they fail. The next year, I showed progress with that student, they pass. I get points for that kid passing. They may have passed by one question from one year to the next year. I get more points on growth if I show over the long haul of that I've advanced that kid in their, um, grade level, and they're better on grade level, I get more points for showing their growth moving from a low achieving, fourth grader to a high achieving, fifth grader. I get more points for that based on the thing that they're in. So it was, it, I don't want to say it skewed the data. It didn't give all the information on the data, how it was calculated.
The calculation is not really comparing apples to apples. Uh, the, the, how they formulated the numbers was different from year to year. So it's kind of hard to give a true side-by-side analysis about that.
Thank you.
You want to add anything?
We've been told sometimes it goes that way, so.
Okay, and then if you look down at economically disadvantaged, of course, we went from a fifty-two to a fifty-seven in raw data. Our students with disability, forty-seven to fifty. Our multi-race from sixty-six to seventy-three. I'm not saying that we do not have room to grow and that we do not need to move forward. What I'm saying is, I want to make sure that you understand, I'm looking at raw data because that's what happens in the classroom with our kids. Um, and so, and I, I truly believe we're headed in the right direction. We're seeing that across the board in each of our schools. The next several slides are all about, uh, school-specific. Any other questions? Okay, school-specific, um, so let's talk about Amalon Elementary. I'm very pleased, um, if you'll notice in the areas where we concentrated, uh, which was our English and our math, we did very well. I will tell you that science, that whole school, uh, they moved from a level two, which is yellow, down to a level three, which is red, um, in regards to that science whole school that is not done by. that is not done by subgroups, that's everybody took it. But I want to remind the board is that if a fifth grade student in science takes the fifth grade science test and it is on fourth grade science material and fifth grade science material. So what we did this past year, we worked really hard with those schools who had failed previously, it's this Mouse and Heights Central Elementary. And we tried to shore up some of the science curriculum in there where we concentrated and other schools was reading and math. So where you put your effort, we saw gain, where we didn't put our effort, we saw a drop. So we're implementing the same things that we did for the two schools last year at Amalon and one of our other schools that showed a decline in the science score.
Yes, we have groups there. Obviously, there's a lot of green in those categories, we'd like to see that if you want to, there's still some discrepancy, but we're talking about all students. But from what Dr. Norman was referencing out earlier, we want to close that gap as much as possible. In general, a lot of it's there. Where you see the yellow and the red, that's where we have concerns. And those, those sections of English and math, regarding those students with disabilities that will be at stake, which we're going to do tonight. The key student is, as we're looking at this, Amalon, and other schools, when you look at those raw numbers, we do have an increase in that number of students that actually passed that assessment. Amalon's a little bit different because they're a larger group that were assessed, so that's part of those numbers, we have to be transparent about them. But in general, the two things they're doing, and you see those gap groups, it's a lot of concern on students with disabilities, but a lot of those, we explain what we've talked about in the context of we have more students that are passing that assessment. So some concern there, some place to be to go, but ultimately, some encouraging trends Dr. Norman was referring to.
Amherst Elementary, again, they are continuing to show improvement. Again, we have two areas of concern in regards to, which is Amalon. We hope to address that.
Yeah, not as much as a concern in here, obviously, the yellow is a little bit better than the red, we talked about it in the context of that. But as is the case here, we have a health survey, increased selection of students that actually passed the assessment, percentage of year.
Central Elementary is the one school that we have in the division who's accredited with conditions. And it's really based on the federal watch list. The federal watch list, and we'll talk about that later on, is the list of schools in our division or across the actual, across the state who have had been at a level three, a level two, or a level one for more than multiple years. Central Elementary has been at a level three, which is in a red, in students with disabilities and chronic absenteeism for more than three to four years. Currently, right now, they're in reform status and we are, they're moving in the right direction, but they just still haven't hit that level where we need them to, to be. So they are accredited with conditions based in the area of chronic absenteeism because they actually went up in their chronic absenteeism rather than go down. And that was, if you remember back, they had three huge bouts of the flu go through Central Elementary last year that knocked the school out. Actually, we did a remote day for them, one, one day, so we could clean the building. So I was not surprised about that. I, but I just need to make you aware of, that is, that is something that Dr. Patron and our team are going to be working on this year.
Yes, ma'am. So again, this is well, again, as is the case throughout, seeing a lot of positives and numerous numbers of students passing. Either this category, which we see that yellow and red, COVID, considering the area of concerns, Dr. Norman stated, historically for Central, very, very good, but also make sure that we continue to see that number going up where students are passing the assessment first time this year.
Quick question, if you could go back a second, please. So you said that the chronic absenteeism rate went up by how much?
They were at a seventeen, seventeen or eighteen percent, something like that.
So that bout of the flu that went through, if that had not hit, would that have still tripped it or not?
I think they would have been in yellow. They were in yellow probably.
They were coming down. They were, at one point, they were at forty-five percent chronic absenteeism and brought it down to twenty-four percent. So they were making improvement, but it, it hit them hard in the middle of the year. So maybe if there was two more weeks on the school year, they may have.
So in your data book, on your data, they were at previous year, twelve point nine one. It really did. Of course, Elon, we still had, we had that same concern like we did with Amalon, they focused in on the reading and math and the subgroups there and slipped down to the level three in regards to science. Go on to the questions to chat on that, but they, they pretty leveled off and moving in the right direction. Now, I'm very excited about gains that have been made by Mouse and Heights. In this, in all subgroups, they increased. And I would have to say in regards to their science, if you remember last year, their science whole school pass rate was fifteen, fifteen or sixteen percent. And they moved from a fifteen percent pass rate in science to a fifty-three, uh, fifty-eight or fifty-eight percent, which is an enormous gain. And they also supported in their chronic absenteeism and brought that number down as well. So very pleased with the gains that we saw there. Timbers Elementary, again, we have an improvement across the board in reading math and in science at Timbers. And you notice their subgroup categories, they are too small, so we don't identify that. You know, we have one class at each grade level, so we just make sure. They also have a very good chronic absenteeism rate. You have fifteen, if you want a fifteen or less, and they're not even in double digits yet, so that's great. Amherst Middle School, they worked very hard with their ATSS team this past year to improve chronic absenteeism. They're making a focus again because they ticked up slightly, but we also noticed that they dipped in their English too.
Yeah, this is a particular subgroup, this is an area of focus for us this year, Amherst Middle School specifically. This is one where we generally held serve, the number of students that passed, we did see a bump with recovery, so students are able to take that and expect to be able to pass. Because that's when they were, there's a positive foundation that they were built on, but ultimately, this is going to be one of our areas of focus for the community department, school as a whole, we are supporting in a way to make sure we keep that number out of the red.
Amherst Middle School, their claims were how they reached their goal that they had set. If you remember last year, they were the level three in the area of science. They met at my R-10s and they improved quite a bit. English as a whole, they, they improved in that area. They still have some concerns that we're dealing with in regards to chronic absenteeism and some of our subgroups as well.
None of them, I don't want to hammer it, Nelson, you did it on the R-day, that looking at the subgroups, especially those that are colored in yellow and red, it's remarkable to see the numbers jump in those categories. The number of students on days that have passed, this day to day versus previous, this trend, the recovery, this, so they truly are trending, they're a positive direction a lot, you know, on those.
I don't know, it's a problem. Okay, so they'll, he gets the most improved award, okay, him and his staff. At their school, I don't know if you remember this, but they had five red level threes last year and two yellow level twos last year. And he is black and green this year and I'm ecstatic. He works the, along with all of his staff, who just did whatever we asked them to do. They are tired of us being in their classrooms. He is tired of doing in his building. And I will say that even though he, he worked on chronic absenteeism, I will tell you that that is actually down from what it was the previous year. So he is trending in the right direction and I could not be more proud of him as he's in his first year at Amherst Elementary High School. Go Lakers.
Just a follow-on, Dr. Crawford, there, excuse me, Dr. Crawford, excuse me. What are his numbers from a subgroup standpoint, do you think they are, they are a factor in the aspect, to the medicine on credit, these, uh, these, twelve, and some, the medicine on board, they did, did my kid, did the other ones, such a, really, really remarkable. Mr. Crawford sent me that text, I bet you boy, you know.
We're doing the same thing in other schools.
A high school, only three of those online, I'm sure.
Thanks, ma'am.
Enjoy those, yeah.
I have a nice pause on this, Jerry. I'd like to point out that if you look at our subgroups, that our, our black students and our white students are a percent on the top. And then in the math, the black students are actually five points higher than the white students and you have, obviously, the Hispanic students were like ninety-seven percent there, their English achievement gap. And I'm just sitting there going, that's just awesome. You don't usually see so, so much synchronicity between those subgroups. That's cool. Very proud of them.
I would just like to say congratulations to Mr. Crawford and all this is due to your leadership and we are very appreciative. Thank you so much.
So division data, I will say that across the board, we have incrementally improved since the pandemic. That first row of columns is the twenty-one, twenty-two, when we came right back from being closed. And then the last is twenty-two, twenty-three data, twenty-three, twenty-four data. Change on the PowerPoint, sorry about that. But we are trending in the right direction when we talk about our four pandemic areas. And I'm very pleased with that. If you look at us across the division against other divisions in our region, we are pretty much, we are in line, we're several points away or ahead of others, so we've kind of fallen in the middle again. We do, you know, as much as we grow, so do those around us, and so we want to make sure that we're doing very intentional, very specifically focused items. We reach out to other divisions to see kind of what they're doing with their gap groups and, and different programs that they're using as well. And we've, you know, we're stealing the best from everybody and then keeping the things that we know are working in our division with our students and moving forward. So I'm very pleased with how we're holding our own across the state.
Dr. Norman, Mr. Jerry, if we could go back one more slide, on that one there, in the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, our history scores is way up there. Can you give me understanding on the dramatic difference there?
In regards to history. Yes.
In, in history and social science.
So with history, that is the version that we actually did, the local assessment, the local alternative assessment, and it was a project based. And so we did not have a state assessment other than US Virginia History, which is our eleventh grade. But across the board, our fourth grade had a test, but our fifth graders did not, our third and fifth, they took a local assessment. And we scorned those locally and we've done that consistently across the board. We do know that when we, our world job, not our world job, our world history won, when we came through the pandemic, that was probably the, the grade level that missed out the most because that's the one that we pulled time from. So we really lost a lot of historic history construction when we, when we dealt with our elementary, middle school.
Thank you.
On-time graduation rates, I am excited about this too. So on-time graduation rate, the goal is a hundred percent. Last year, year before last, was ninety-three point three-one, and this past year was ninety-five point nine-nine. So we had a better two, one and two percent increase in our on-time graduation rate, which is what we really want, that's where we track. We want to get a hundred percent, but we are moving in the right direction. Our federal graduation indicator, the goal is eighty percent. Two years ago, not last year, but the year before, we were at ninety percent. Last year, we were at ninety-five point six-seven. So we have five percent, more than a five percent growth in our federal graduation indicator. And then our graduation completion index across the board, the goal is, of course, an eighty-five percent. Two years ago, we were at ninety-four point three-two, and this year, we were at ninety, last year, we were at ninety-six point five-six. So in every single one of our graduation indicator, on-time graduations, federal graduation, and graduation completion, we improved at more than two percentage points, which is very difficult to do across the board. So I was very, very pleased with, with that outcome. And then the goal for dropout rate is zero. We don't want anybody dropping out, okay? Two years ago, our dropout rate was four percent, which was the highest it has been in a very long time. And this past year, we brought that back down to two point three-four, which is on average where we normally are in regards to kids dropping out of school. But we're trying to get better. And then chronic absenteeism, Dr. Patron and her team worked tirelessly in regards to chronic absenteeism. The goal, of course, is less than fifteen percent. Last year, we, this past, two years ago, we had twenty-six point one for the, for the division. This past year, we were at twenty-five point five. So we're trending down, which is where we want to go. And she's got a lot of things that she's putting into place for this coming school year that keeps us in the right direction. So where are we in the current year and what do we need to do? Of course, I put, here we were last year when I came before the board, our, we had six schools that use their three-year cumulative average, but to get where they needed to be. Try, we had three schools, the high school being one of them, that was under triennial, and we did not have any schools that, that, that everything on current year. Currently, right now, we have all nine schools that are using three-year cumulative average to get their accreditation. We do not have any in triennial, which is a good thing. And our current year, poor Mr. Crawford, he only missed it by one indicator, or he would read current. For everything, so sorry about that. But he's getting there, he's going to have that for the next one. So when I talked about the federal watch list, this D O E, it's a watch list from the federal government. The previous year, we had seven that were on our watch list, seven schools that were on our watch list. The one school that was added, again, which, that was added to it this year was Amalon Elementary, and that was based on science and a academic indicator for English achievement gap, any question? Accountability expectations, this is the exact same thing that I showed you last year, what we are being held accountable for by the state and what we have to do. It hasn't changed because the state has not told us yet what we're going to do. So what we've done as a division here, we've put into place everything that we did last year, knowing that the state will at least start that as a minimum. So I don't want to wait on the state to tell me and get that information in December and have to backtrack. So I'm going ahead and putting things into place, just like we did last year, so we can have kids very intentionally get remediation and intervention and supports. Our focus is on tier one quality instruction, that's it. When we talk about what we do in the schools, it is all about alignment of written, taught, and tested. So we're doing lesson plan reviews, we're doing instructional rounds, professional development for our administrators. We're looking specifically at student information and what that looks like using our growth assessments and our home assessments. What we're required to do, just like you are required to do, that Dr. Wells will tell you, they're on, we, every school is required to have a comprehensive school improvement plan that builds your comprehensive improvement plan that the board has. We have those in place and they are due up on our website, but they're the first and all of our schools are moving to have those ready by that time. But no, they're the first, and all of our schools are moving to have those ready by that time. Tentative, again, the D O E has not told us what we have to do, but right now, or what we're, what we have there. But right now, we have seven schools that we believe will go through the academic review process. We have none that are in monitoring. And we have two schools that we have on our current radar that we just are making sure we keep track of. And that's in that regards to their science and their subgroups. The great thing is, we don't have schools like we did last year that were both under academic review and under monitoring. We've moved out of the monitoring category and we just have those reviews taking place. Superintendent Quarterly Review, Dr. Wells, do you want to talk about that?
So as of last year, we're going for the reviews, focused on four main areas, attendance, behavioral, academics, and observations, and what the kid makes sure to do under observation. So every principal will have to, will come in and meet with the senior staff and discuss how they meet those goals and what they're doing there. Of course, their attendance, again, within the behavioral data, they'll brief us on that every quarter, every nine weeks. So that may send a bit of that a little bit, but also kind of gives us an indication of what's going on inside the building.
This is our tentative required actions. They have not changed since last year. We're waiting on the state to kind of tell us what those actions are. And when those do change, I'll update, I'll come and go with the board to update you. The next thing is, this is what we're doing currently in regards to our division-wide instructional focus. These are all the things that kind of my team has already put into place. Show of Amber's, of course, Dr. Wells is once again leading the, leading that. Dr. Patron is handling our ATSS along with Ms. Mullin Camp. Our instructional rounds are a little bit different this year. And once we get through one full cycle, we'll bring that back to you so we can tell you what that looks like for a school. But rather than just coming in one day and just buggering the school, we're buggering them for four days in a row. And then we have middle school reading specialists. Thank you very much for allowing me to information on that. A secondary math coach has been put into place. Professional development for our administrators on lesson alignment, which gives us the biggest bang for our buck when we're going. And then job develop, job embedded staff development along with what Mr. Neighbors is doing with our students with disabilities.
Ultimately, for all of our subgroups, we're trying to make sure all the effort's being placed in the classroom, and we really have that lens. We're thinking about, are we really making sure the construction will provide with a lesson planning, the way we're working with teachers, is that collaborative planning? We're keeping that focus on all of our students, including our subgroups, at the forefront. For students with disabilities, the team of Student Services Office is actually going in separate from the instructional rounds, the observations, looking at lesson planning, sit with teachers, going over data individual by student, and make sure that we are putting everything in place we can to support them because they're working to move that student forward. So we're really trying to have a perspective, different lens on some of the process this year to ensure that we're not missing any of these subgroups who need to be put in this system.
Any questions?
This is where we want to be next year, at the end of this year. And I think we have a really good chance of getting to that. I know with the hard work and effort that our teachers did last year and our administrators, and what they have already shown us this year, we will, we will be moving in this direction.
Dr. Wells, any comments? Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, there's questions first, all of them.
Board, Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Norman, what, what do you think's going to be your biggest challenge getting us to that, that line all green, of all green? What's your biggest challenge? Is it attendance? Do you think that's going to be our, our number one challenge?
I would have to say chronic absenteeism. Having parents just engage with us and stay focused. I would have to say that, those are our two things. I need parents involved in their child's education. And I need students to show them and engage in the lesson. Don't just come to school, come to school and be ready to participate.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Mr. Terry? How does that one quick follow-up? How is their appetite for absenteeism looking right now compared to this time last year? Do you just off the top of your head, towards, is it going to be much better than before that?
Oh, yes.
So our gap rate now is much better than last year. We currently have three, four schools who would be considered in the red, which is already better than what we were last year when all of our schools were in the red at the start of the year. Temperance is already in the green, but they're traditionally our best school. The rest of our schools are all, every single school is improved. In fact, the high school right now is sitting at only a 26% chronic absenteeism rate to start the school year. So I can't promise it's going to stay there, but it's, it's, we're doing a lot of things and this will be much better already, especially compared to last year.
All right, thank you so much.
Board, anything else?
And I'll just say, and there's a stat that comes out, we'll talk about that in a little bit in this slide here in a few seconds. But there's a stat that suggests that there's a 17 to 25% decrease on student achievement for those that are chronically absent versus those that aren't chronically absent in the content areas. So there's a lot of, this correlation, you have a clean dependence in student achievement. So that's all we need in school. If we're better in school, we can't teach, right? So we need them in school. I just, again, follow-up, I just want to say how proud I am of the work everybody's done and where we are right now. We know there's still work to be done, but we're pleased with the progress we're making. And we'll continue that this year. And next year, you'll see more improvement. So like I said, keep it forward, thank you.
Okay, so I have one additional thing to, that Dr. Wells, I'm going to talk about. And that is, you have in your folder, it's called All in Virginia, is Governor Duncan's new plan for the state of Virginia for all schools. And it is a high-intensity tutoring system that we will be implementing effective October 16th. Everybody read.
So with that being said, we know we need to help our students improve, just both students. We, we found out, this was coming to us last Thursday morning, an hour before the press conference. And we received the data, the information on an information document on Tuesday. So we're still digesting everything, what we need to do. But there is a, there's a timeline there around October 16th that they want things in place. And so until we have our plan, I don't want to sit here and make a lot of comments on it yet. Until we have developed our, if I had a chance to talk to our staff and talk to our principals and teachers, and know what's going on. But we will be doing some things in regards to tutoring in our schools based on the All in Virginia Plan. And more to come on that once we have, once we have laid the plan out.
There's my question. Are they going to be funding us for this? And how are we supposed to even? We're still looking for reading specialists, I believe. How are we supposed to actually find more now?
So from a funding standpoint, the state budget did appropriate $418 million to help fund this. The question is, is it, do we get additional funding? Or is that funding included in the $2.5 billion that we say we're supposed to get? And that's the question I haven't, penalty you ask us what the answer is. So we know we're getting additional funding. We just aren't sure how much funding exactly and whether the funding can be useful, can be useful, doesn't have enough in those guidelines yet. But there is additional funding coming. We just aren't sure at the amount.
Well, we currently do have a vacancy, don't we?
Oh, we have, we have five, five and a half vacancies for staff that are using long-term support. Mr. Yal, we'll get that in a few seconds.
Board, anything else?
I have a couple things on the list. The next thing I'd like to talk to you about is our integrated reading and writing assessment. You have a one pager in your folder. And I'm just literally going to walk you through. This is a new assessment that is, that is now being pulled. It is beginning of the spring of 2024. We are going to integrate both the reading and the writing assessments that are given at grades five, eight, and 11, and of course. It is a new component, it is a new assessment where it is a passage that they're going to read, accompanied by six multiple choice questions, and then a prompt that invites them to write about whatever that question is on that prompt or whatever that information is in that passage. So they have to read the passage, comprehend it, answer some questions, and then write about it. It is a nonfiction passage and it's something that Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Smithy are working with English teachers across 12 to, to begin that process of getting kids used to this new form of assessment. It will be completed by grades five, grade eight, and grade 11. And the change for E O Z is only that they actually have to take it. It does not replace the, or eliminate their E O Z writing assessment that gives, that they must have for verification for their graduation. It will not replace that. They still have to take the E O Z writing assessment. However, for grade eight, it will actually replace their marked writing assessment. So there will no longer be a marked writing assessment, they will, for writing, like that old direct prompt. And then one day, you have the multiple choice. Now it's a combined and it'll start in, I want to say April. Not sure, I'll get to that slide in a minute. And it goes all the way, it goes all the way through. But it eliminates the grade eight writing, just as they did years ago with eliminating the fifth grade writing. However, now on the fifth grade, the change there is that it will be given to the fifth graders on their reading test. It will be a integrated reading and writing test. And then we can use this as our local assessment. So instead of giving them a local prompt, then they write out, we have done this test and we can replace that local assessment with this. We, I believe we do get data back from this. I'm not sure on that yet. And it starts the window from March 11th through May 17th. And so if you notice, our statewide non-testing writing window goes from April 8th to June 21st. And so they are parallel, moving at the same time. So we're going to have to tweak our testing schedule and update that now that this is coming up. Any questions on our new integrated reading and writing assessment?
Board?
Okay, now I would hand this over to Ms. Wheeler, because we now have the Virginia Literacy Act. And in order to move forward with what we need to do with the Virginia Literacy Act, you as a board have been, you need to make some decisions. And so we wanted to give you an overview of what that looks like. Ms. Wheeler?
Mr. Terry, members of the board, thank you for giving me some time tonight to talk about the Virginia Literacy Act that's recently been approved. So if you look here just at this slide, this is just some information provided by the D O E in regards to the importance of the Virginia Literacy Act and being able to put an increased focus on our students who are at risk and need support specifically in the area of literacy, just knowing how important it is to have proficient readers and writers by the time that they leave third grade entering into grade four. What is the Virginia Literacy Act? It is, as just as the slide says, a multi-fold approach. It really takes the input from families, from parents. It works to make sure that our teachers entering the profession are better prepared to address student needs that are identified. It really focuses on science-based reading research. So that's kind of a buzzword that we hear right now, science-based reading research. And so that's really research that is look at how students learn to read. Reading is not a natural occurrence. Our brain has to process the sounds and the letters on the page to be able to read and make meaning from text. And so the Virginia Literacy Act is really spotlighting that research, making sure that we're using evidence-based practices with our students to make sure that those foundational skills that help them to be able to read text on a page and make meaning from it are provided to them through explicit and systematic instruction. So the Virginia Literacy Act is originally passed specific for our K-3 students. And so the governor and the general assembly have made additional investments to make sure that divisions are able to use resources, not only for our K-3s, K-3 students, but our K-8 students. And so this legislation was expanded to make sure that our K-8 students are getting exactly what they need in regards to literacy instruction. The goals of the Virginia Literacy Act, they include a lot. And so as a division, in order to support the efforts of the Virginia Literacy Act and what the legislation reads out, each division in the state is required to adopt a new core curriculum for K-5. Currently, the K Department of Education has released that core curriculum list for grades K through three with an anticipation of an updated list now that that legislation has been expanded to include those resources for grades four and five, as well as the supplemental resources that are required for grades K through eight for intervention and remediation. Another component of the Virginia Literacy Act is to make sure that we have access to a screener for our students K through eight. So currently, in Amherst County, we give the PALS assessment for our students pre-K through three. This legislation puts funding in place to be able to develop a screener that can be used locally to identify students in grades four through eight who also have gaps in those foundational skills. And Amherst County is excited, we are actually participating in some of the pilots available through Virginia Literacy Partnerships, which is our former, former PALS office in Charlottesville, that's working with D O E to develop some of those screeners. And so we'll be able to get some information from that. Another goal of the D L A is to make sure that students have access to their reading specialists, the magazine in K through eight. And we appreciate and thank you for the funding to put towards that already for us in Amherst County. And then lastly, just making sure that we have a division literacy plan in place. And as you know, we have recently updated our literacy plan here in Amherst County to make sure that it outlines foundational literacy skills and how we should best support our students. And so at the division, we're just waiting to see what D O E provides to us as far as the template and components to see if our current literacy plan is missing anything. And one of the pieces that our plan has as required is that importance of involving parents and families, right, in the education of their students, as we've talked a lot about tonight already, which is making sure that parents and families are aware of the gaps that their students have that are identified from these screeners and have a stay in interventions and things that are put in place to help their student move forward. So that's kind of the goals of the legislation in a nutshell. One of the pieces with the funding that goes with this legislation is statewide training for reading specialists. And so all 15 of our elementary reading specialists participated in intensive, two-day training in Charlottesville in August to really get some of that science-based research so that they could bring it back to their buildings and support teachers using a coaching model to empower them. And that training goes throughout the year as well for them. As you know, our PALS data each year continues to show that we have a decrease in the number of students that are identified on that PALS assessment, which is the goal. And so this training really helps to make sure that all students are getting that quality core instruction that Dr. Norman talked about earlier tonight. This is just quickly a timeline that D O E has provided in regards to the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. And as I mentioned, they're trying to fast-track some of those components now that it's been extended to cover grades four through eight. And so right now, we are waiting for the pilot opportunity with the Virginia Literacy Act and the D L P assessment, and then waiting for the board to revise our English S O Ls. So we're also getting ready to have to adopt new English S O Ls in addition to the implementation of the requirements of the, of the D L A. And so right now, for us as a division, this is just to give you a snapshot as to where we are. And if you notice, we started this process prior to the legislation being replaced. A T S was very proactive in identifying the need to make sure that our, our literacy instruction was really targeting those foundational skills that we saw as deficits on our assessments. And so one of the things that we've put in place is a quarterly newsletter for our parents and families, provide literacy tips on how they can support at home. We're in our third cohort of the Letters Professional Development, which is all science-based reading research, empowering teachers, teaching them how this teaching them how this brain actually learns to read so that they can use strategies then that will best meet the needs of their students. And then last year, providing training on what science-based reading is up to our elementary principals. And we did that through a partnership with T TAC out of J U U. And then most recently, developing our phonics scope and sequence. So giving teachers resources on how they can support our students to meet the needs and to make sure that those gap, like I said, have been filled in. So we are patiently awaiting more information from V D O E in regards to the other components, and just continuing to monitor our data and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students. And so this legislation helps to make sure we can find and be able to do that. So that was a quick review, but any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Ms. Wheeler, it was a great presentation. Do we have a list somewhere of the names of these science-based reading programs that we're using the curriculums?
Yes ma'am. So V D O E publishes on its website. It's a list of eight texts that have been vetted through committees of educators, administrators, community members, you name it, across the state of Virginia that have used rupors identifying the pieces that are there. And so yes, that list is published on the V D O E website of the resources that are pre-curriculums based on phonics, explicit systematic instruction. That's what this is really geared towards.
So do we use all eight of those, or have we chosen a couple?
No, ma'am. So we, as a division, are currently in the process of selecting which those resources and going through the textbook adoption process, but still kind of waiting to get the complete list, because the list we have right now is just K through three. And we're required under this legislation to adopt K through five, with that being in place by fall of twenty four. So we have a really short window, and so we're just waiting for that information from the state.
Is it possible to get a link to that list?
Absolutely. I can ensure that you get it back, please.
Board, anything else?
Thank you very much.
And so you remembered when I introduced her, I said, you as a board are going to have to make some decisions in regards to the Virginia Literacy Act. And one of those is textbook adoption. You as a board actually adopt the curriculum that we implement. We will, once we get the full list, K through eight, we will then go through the entire textbook adoption to make sure that that happens. And Ms. Wheeler promises me there's going to be money for it. Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Her and her staff have done a phenomenal job in implementing what the state is asking us to do. I appreciate that. The last thing on the list for me is regarding our, I lost it. People teacher ratio, thank you. People teacher ratio. So you have two different charts. The first one is our elementary, and this actually just shows you what we show you in our budget to kind of let you know how many teachers we have in each school, at each specific grade, so you can see the breakdown of what this current people teacher ratio is for each area. I would like to let you know that at the elementary, on this first page, we saw an uptick in numbers at Madison Heights Elementary School and kindergarten. So we have already put in for acquisition as an instructional aide to provide support into those kindergarten classes that will help us there. And also at E one elementary, in the fourth grade, we had a teacher leave at the beginning of the school year to advance her career. That class was already a very low number with three teachers, so we kept it at two. We're getting ready to open it up, to put an instructional aide in to support those two teachers as well. The numbers have stayed the same. We did not think that they were going to be at that rate. We felt two families was moving out, but they decided not to. And so we're putting in an instructional aide at that class as well, at that grade level as well. If you go to the next page, this is our secondary. And secondary is a little bit different. It's a whole lot easier to split class and hire a teacher for an elementary than it is to figure out class sizes at the high school when I may need one section of English, three additional sections for math, two sections for history, and a C T D section. I have to have the endorsement for those teachers, so I don't want to hire five teachers. So what we do is Mr. Crawford begs, and I give him more money per section.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. So right now, he has sixteen extra sections where teachers have chosen to get paid an additional stipend to teach an extra set of students so that we can lower our class size student ratio. And that is being utilized, and it's very helpful for our class sizes at the high school and both at the middle schools. Right now, I don't think we have one section at the middle school that's in. And myself and Mr. Gallagher will answer any questions that you have.
Board, anything?
Chair, one of the questions that, going from the line you gave me, I answered this at our last board meeting. What does our current enrollment this year look like compared to last year?
It is, right now, we're up nine on what the actual budget was, but we're up about, I will give you the exact numbers in the email, but the other day, we were up about forty-two, forty-three students from last year at the school.
Anything else, board?
Early childhood, it says on.
Dr. Norman thought she was. Just a quick update. Ms. Julie Howard, she provided an update for the board here. I gave a rundown on early childhood programs, this is a initiative that's been placed this year. Those involve competition as well as community partners that we are working with. We want to highlight that we're in very, she had a hundred and fourteen students. So we're actually up one since this was written, a hundred and fifteen with three more in the process. There's some early growth requirements, probably even two thousand. Once those three are seated, we are officially completely full of childhood programs. Very excited, I'd work to, and there, good chance to stop by. And hang on, one of our early childhood programs is a very planned place this morning afternoon. You have any questions about our early childhood programs? If you have any questions.
Board, any questions? Moving on?
Chair, members of the board, now I have this to answer, the very first. Thank you. So I have several things for you this evening, not quite as much as instruction, just a few items. The first is our vacancy memo, so you can add that to review. I do feel good about where we are in that process. Several of these current vacancies, for example, social studies are projected to be filled by second semester. One of the two elementary positions may be filled very shortly as one of the individuals from one of those spaces long-term stuff will likely be less available very soon. As far as bus drivers go, I believe that would be number four instead of five there with the new hire. And the actual instructional assistant number should be three. So since we're close to this, we do keep moving forward and try to bring progress. I will speak to the reading specialist question, because I know that our desire is to have an additional reading specialist. Our local decision, we value that, best practices, and want to have that added. And we did make that commitment. We are already reading regulations and requirements to the Virginia Literacy Act, but we want to go beyond that. That was the intention, putting a second specialist in place. With a skinny budget, that wasn't possible. So I anticipate, but I don't want to speak too soon. I believe we'll probably revisit that as we find out more fully what this new group budget will provide to us, specifically in the area of Virginia Literacy Act. So any questions that you have regarding any of these positions on the vacancy memo, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes, Mr. Terry. Mr. Gallagher on our bus drivers. I believe I heard somewhere in classes, is that true?
I understand there are, and Dr. Howard even answered, two classes. I wasn't there.
Four.
Number four in class.
Four currently in classes, yeah.
Okay.
So if that's, that's, we may, you know, be at our capacity then. I wasn't aware of the number in the classes.
Anything else, board? Yeah.
One question, please. I was speaking with some teachers, I think it was last week, and I was told we were down a teacher for our students that English is their second language.
so I